Pam, you ready?
Matt, are you recording? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. All right. It's 6:45 and we'll call the May 11th School Board meeting to order. And as we normally do in person, we still will do virtually. We'll rise for the pledge allegiance.
Okay. Hold on just for one moment, please.
Technical issue for the flag.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find my mouse. Okay.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. And Tracy is excused tonight. She had an educational conference that has to do with her job. So I'll just go ahead and call the roll. Trustee Bowser? Yep, she's here. I can't hear her again. Trustee Revard?
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Here.
Trustee Gilmore?
Here.
Vice President Schaffner?
Here.
President Reed here. Thank you. And we've established a quorum with six members present. And we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Or? We have a motion by Matt, supported by Misty, to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted and that brings us to gratitudes. Who would like to share gratitude? All right.
I'll throw one out there. I am very appreciative of administration, staff, everybody that's been just handling this pandemic with seemingly ease. I'm sure it's not, but everything's gone very smoothly and I'm very appreciative of you guys, of what you've done for our students, what you've done for the staff. It's just been amazing. So thank you for that.
Ditto.
I think we can all ride on those coattails. That was very well stated. Thank you to everybody. Okay. All right. Well, can move on then to, we have the consent agenda before us. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. And support.
Okay, we have a motion by Shannon, supported by Jeff Revard, is for the consent agenda to be approved as presented. I'll call the roll. Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
And President Reed, yes, the consent agenda is approved as presented. And that brings us to our discussion portion of the meeting. And I didn't ask before, but do we have any guests with us watching? Just for curiosity, did anybody join us?
Alex will be watching. She is not at this very moment, but she's going to join us in a bit.
Okay.
My daughter Alex.
Okay.
We don't have any in attendance at this moment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And for discussion, our first item up is the financial update with Chris Lahey.
Great. Thank you. I'll take the screen. So my first item is our, is our general fund year-to-date report. One thing looking over this that you may have noticed if you looked over it from last month to this month. So last month, we were about 1.9 million with our expenditures over our revenues. And from this month, we're only at 717,000 where our revenues are now under our expenditure. So we're closing that gap. Our revenues are catching up to our expenditures, which is what you would expect at this point in time for, for the year. I don't know if you guys have had a lot of discussion about that in the past, but we received those state aid payments hopefully through August. And so as our expenses decrease over the summertime, that's something that you would expect. So we're closing that gap. One other thing I wanted to point out is down here in this last line, this 54,000 here, and nobody's asked me this question, but I just wanted to point it out. You can see there's a line there for debt service and we had $21,000 there last year for the actual, for our final year figure. And then nothing was budgeted in that debt service line for the final budget of last year or the original budget for this year. Now we have $54,000 in that line and that's related to our, our copiers. So our copier lease through Michigan Office Solutions was being booked to the buildings, but per our auditors, it needs to be booked to these debt service lines. So in case you had noticed that and you wondered, I wonder, you know, why there was no budget there? I know it was something that Jeff had picked up in the audit last year. And I think he was planning on putting something in there for the final budget this year, but it will be in the final budget. So if you were wondering, it's not an increase in expense. It's just a way, it's a different way of booking the expense per the, per the auditing standards that we have to follow. So that's just a little bit about our year-to-date so far. So next month, I think we will see that number in red actually change to where our revenues have exceeded our expenditures. I will jump over to the rest of my report here. Excuse me. So we just received our, there's, there's some good news tonight financially before we hit some of the COVID-19 fallout. But our equalization summary for the tax year of 2020, which is the coming tax year, is, was just released and taxable values throughout Cedar Springs School District are up over 5%. So that's good news for the district from a standpoint of, you can see my numbers on there, we're going to, we should increase our sinking fund revenues by over $30,000 next year and our debt fund revenues by almost $230,000 next year, which helps us retire that debt faster. It's great for our overall financial picture. I know you guys have discussed in the past that kind of works against our general operating revenues because we do have the headly rollback. And I'll discuss that in more detail at the June 8th meeting, how that's going to affect us. It's not a major impact and sounds like there's been discussion about that in the past. I'll stop for a minute. Does anybody have any questions about the year-to-date or the equalization summary? So far, okay, perfect. Another thing I wanted to point out, we did receive our CARES Act allocation, which is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief allocation. They keep coming up with more of these, these, what's the word for that, Jen? I can't, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot. This is ESER, but it's related to CARES and so.
It's an acronym.
Acronym, thank you. I knew I could go to the English teacher. But, so that's a $2 trillion federal CARES Act and of that $2 trillion, $389 million were allocated to the state of Michigan. And of that $389 million, $280,000, almost $281,000 is allocated to Cedar Springs Public Schools. So on Friday of last week, they opened up that window where we can put in our application of how we're going to use those funds and begin to draw them down. So we began, we began quite some time ago to have discussion about that. And we will have until September 30th of 2021, so well over a whole fiscal year to spend these funds. And right now, our discussions are about student technology because that's something we know we need. And regardless of what the fall looks like, that's going to be a need. So I won't say a whole lot more about that right now, but just wanted to let you guys know an update on, on our portion of that CARES Act. And then that's all been good news. Now we have the slightly less desirable news. Friday, this week, Friday on the 15th, will be the consensus revenue estimating conference in Lansing, the CREG, as everybody calls it. And that's when we'll start to get a much clearer picture of what our, our state aid foundation allowance will look like for next year. Because that's when everybody will come together and give us an idea of how much revenue shortfall we have. Scott shared with me something from the Senate Fiscal Agency today about April revenues and in aggregate for all the funds of the state, we're about $1 billion under the projection for April of 2020. So a little bit scary, but we kind of knew that was coming. So right now, based on estimated revenues from the University of Michigan, because they do kind of a monthly economic forecast, we would be facing about a $630 per pupil decrease between this year and next year. And we're not quite sure if there's going to be a proration for this year and then a decrease for next year, or if they're going to keep us whole for this year and then a bigger decrease for next year. Those are the things we're still looking to, to find out within the next month or so. But a $630 per pupil decrease would be about $2.2 million to our budget deficit. So we discussed that before. You know, we do have that, that fund balance and we can weather that storm as long as things can turn around relatively quickly. But just to give you guys an idea of what we're looking at, and I hope to have a better, clearer picture in a month when we have our budget meeting at the June 8th board meeting. So any questions about how that looks and how that's shaping up? I have, I have run an initial budget, an initial run-through of our final budget for this year. And I can tell you that we, because of the savings that we've had, we are looking to add to the fund balance this year if we were to continue to get our state aid. So more to come on that next month. And I will, I was telling Scott, typically I would come to you guys with, here's my final budget. This is what I believe is going to happen. And here's my initial budget for next year and this is what I believe is going to happen. I'm probably going to come to you guys with, with several scenarios for each, you know, because I don't think we're going to have a real clear picture on the revenue side by June 8th. Really by press time by June, you know, June 3rd. So then we'll adopt, hopefully we'll know more by June 22nd and we'll adopt the most appropriate budgets at that point. So that's kind of my plan moving forward. And then of course, lastly, our investments, we are still earning almost 1%. They are down to about 0.88% now. But on April 30th, we were earning about 0.95% from my last fund. So you can see in April, we in aggregate added, you know, almost 7,000, over $7,000 to our, across all funds. So still very much worth our while to be investing our, our assets there. That is my financial report for tonight. Let me stop my share, although I think I'm the next one up as well. Were there any other questions for me?
Chris, you commented that you, we didn't know if the state would prorate this year, this year's revenue. And I know these are, these are unique times, but is there a history of the state doing that from time to time? Or are you aware how they've handled similar situations in the past?
Yeah, there, there was one time, well, there was one time about 10 years ago that there was a proration very late in the year, in August, actually. So for the, for the last state aid payment. So obviously budgets were already, you know, budgets were adopted, everything was down the road and, and there was a proration because there wasn't enough revenues. And that was kind of a delayed effect of the, of the recession back in 2008, 2009, 2010. So it is possible and it's something that obviously they don't want to do. I mean, the executive order came out and said, continue to pay your employees. We're going to continue to fund schools. But there's, you know, if the money's not there, the money's not there. And so that's the, that's the concern. So it's very possible that we could still get a proration after we pass the budget. And the good news, Jeff, is that based on, based on what I'm seeing, we can handle a proration for this year and still, still be okay from a standpoint of finishing the year without dipping into fund balance. So I don't think a proration would be anything close to that $633. I think it may be $100 or $200 per pupil, just to kind of ease, you know, some of that, that constraint in the revenues. But we'll see. Yeah. It has happened. And I've heard it did happen back in the early 80s. I wasn't around, well, I was around, but barely. And I don't recall it, so.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Any other questions?
Anything else coming from the federal government?
There, there is, there is word that there may be more coming from the federal government. And that's kind of the hope too, is that, you know, where are we going to, if, if the state is going to keep us whole and allow us to continue to receive full state aid, is the federal government going to backfill those, those funds? So there's talk of it, but who knows? We've received this, this CARES Act funding quicker than I thought we would, so. Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
In our thinking, Chris, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about what our plan is as far as the CARES Act funding goes?
Yeah, certainly. I didn't know if, if you wanted me to go into that yet, but as I said, about $281,000. And in working with Jen and Chris Dart and Rob Egler on the technology side, they, they've been able to give us some numbers. We're about 1,000 devices away from being one-to-one in student technology. And so we are going to purchase about 1,100 Chromebook devices. So that way, if we are back in the fall, we'll be one-to-one and every student can have, we'll have a Chromebook for every student in our buildings. If we're not, it will be much easier for us to deploy our devices and provide one for every child to, to learn from home. And that cost would be just shy of $210,000. So we would have about $70,000 left in that CARES Act allocation to use potentially at starting to replace, to purchase devices for our teachers. So they are, are better able to serve their students remotely as well. So we would do that in like, in a multi-year tiered type of approach, because obviously $70,000 would not be enough to purchase all of our teachers' devices. So we haven't really gone down that road yet of how we would like to deploy that and who would be first. And we would want to do some piloting along that. So once again, the good thing there is that we have until September 30th of 2021 to spend those dollars. I know the state, the federal government really would like us to spend them on remote learning and things, you know, that are relevant to the situation we're in. So I've spoken to some school districts and they've, I won't name names, but said, we're just going to, we're going to pay our staff with them. And I said, that, that's not, that's not what we need to do. So everybody here is on the same page that we need to enhance our opportunities for learning for our students and that's what we intend to do. So.
And that is aligned with our flight plan, you know? The fifth operational goal is to provide that sustainable access to and use of technology, value-added technology for our students. And so, you know, we're going to be, we're going to need to be thoughtful and forward-thinking if we make that, this investment in 2020. You know, the reality is, is that in 2024, 2025, we're going to be, you know, needing to reinvest because the life cycle of these devices is a four to five-year life cycle. And so it's that continual loop of investment, trying to avoid those large, those large chunks so that we can be more sustainable within the overall flow of the budget.
Yep. And there will be a flight plan coming on the technology piece as well. So, and I, in my conversation with Chris Dart today as well, and Scott, I haven't told you this yet either. I, I didn't realize this previously, but the Chromebooks that we currently have are tiered in their life stages as well. So I believe in September of 2021, we'll have about a 700 or so devices that will be end of life. And that just, that comes from, oh, Google will no longer, Chrome will no longer support the updates anymore. And so they, you know, they're not as, they're not usable, they're not safe for kids to be on. So yeah, this is, this is something that we need to do anyways. And so it's, it's really nice to have these funds to be able to take a big chunk there.
Yeah, good point. Thanks for sharing.
Absolutely. Do you want me to just skip ahead or would, because next we have the food service PLE tool.
You're up.
All right. So each year in June, we need to approve, the board needs to approve the paid lunch equity tool. And I, well, here, I'll just share this screen once again. So I pulled this up from the files. This is the food service meal price history chart. And I'm going to show you why, but I will also propose that we would not raise prices again next year. So you can see that Cedar Springs has a history of really not raising prices, even though we're required to by the state with some caveats where we do not need to. So you can see we've been at $1.40 for elementary breakfast. I don't need to go through them for quite some time. I know last year you all voted not to raise meal prices as well. If you look at the, let me just jump over here real quick. So this is the paid lunch equity tool. And this, this actually comes from a spreadsheet that has a lot of tabs on it. And I worked with Holly Haywood on this. But based on their weighted average price requirement, the district really needs to be at $3 per, per meal. Okay. And that's weighted over lunches and breakfasts. And you can see that here. And we have a weighted average of $2.61. So the state of Michigan would really like us to raise our meal prices for, for next school year, 2021, by 39 cents per meal. Okay. Now they do cap it so that you, in only one year, need to add your prices by 10 cents. So I believe that, yeah, remaining increase to be carried over to the next year would be 29 cents because they want us to move up right here, 10 cents cap to 2.71. And actually, there was a, there was a MDE review, a desk review, I understand in 2017, 18. And that was one of their findings is you're not, you're not increasing your prices by the paid lunch equity tool. Do you guys have a recollection of this? I'm not sure. Yeah. So the thing that, and I've experienced this in other districts as well, the thing that kind of trumps everything is that there's this guidance that's released by the United States Department of Agriculture that says if you do have a positive lunch account balance on December 31st of any year, you are exempt from the PLE pricing requirements. And so once again, there was two findings from that, from that review. Number one, we weren't increasing our meal prices. And number two, we had too high of a food service lunch balance. And we had to spend it down, as I'm sure you guys all recall. So they work in complete, you know, against each other. So anyways, in talking to Holly, we're not going to, we're going to ask you, the board, not to raise our, our lunch and meal prices once again because we have been spending down the food service account or the food service balance. I think we're going to be back underneath where we need to be this year. And I'll have that for you next month with my budget for the food service fund. But in June, the June 8th board meeting, once again, that's just something that I can go into more detail if you'd like, but I know you guys have seen it before, where I would urge the board to just pass no raise in lunch, breakfast, or other meal prices across the district. So would you like more information there? Or have you guys seen this before and you're all set? Good to go? Okay. Yep, just information all night. What's that, Jeff? I'm sorry.
I think we went through this last year, the same situation. I think we're all set.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds perfect. So that'll be on the action items agenda for June 8th as well.
And I will, I'll just throw this out there too. And I'm thinking we're kind of all in the same thought process because we did it last year as well. If we can avoid raising prices, let's do that.
Yeah.
Yep. I think we're all in the same place. Okay. All right. We'll move on to item C, the 2021 KIASB operational budget resolution. Chris?
Yep. So I presented on this last month and just was informational. I can bring that up again and I'd be happy to discuss any part of it. But that just needs to be, we just need to take action on that tonight because it needs to be approved by the local districts in May. So any questions about the ISD budget? It's just the general fund, their general fund budget that we need to approve tonight.
And the resolution as presented would need to be amended because the resolution shows Tracy as being present. And we would have to amend that resolution to account for Tracy as being absent from this particular meeting when the resolution was passed.
Okay. Do they have her signing it or is it just as it's listed?
They have her signing it.
Okay. But she can sign it afterwards. She's just not present. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. I think we're good with that. Moving on to item D, the KIASB Board of Directors candidates.
Yeah. So we, we first took a look at this at the work session. The KIASB Board has three open positions. There are currently three individuals on the slate to fill those positions. Two of the individuals are incumbents, Anne Hamming from the Thorn Apple Kellogg Board, Catherine Downs Lewis, who's an incumbent on the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board. And then Beth Milonowski, who is not on the KIASB Board, but she does serve East Grand Rapids Public Schools as a member of their Board of Education. So our work is to approve the slate that's been presented if the board so chooses. And then I would actually be able to pass that along, pass your vote along to the KIASB Board electronically.
And we're grateful they want to serve. I don't think we have any questions.
Okay. The next piece is the middle school, high school, high school handbooks. So from discussion from last week, the middle school handbook is stayed in as presented. We did make a revision to the high school text. You'll find it starting on page 68 of the board packet. We basically, in terms of the cell phone area, we just pulled the language that is currently from board policy and inserted that into the handbook. So with no changes. So it is text-heavy, but I think that, well, based on what I was hearing from the board members last week, that this would be the, the best practice for us moving forward. And I think the big caveat here that I was hearing questions from the board last week or the, in April, was around the permissions to use cell phones in the classroom. The way the policy language reads, it is an or situation. So the teacher can grant permission or the administrator can grant position. It's not a combination of the two. It's not the teacher granting permission and the principal granting permission or the administrator granting permission. It's one or the other. And I'll make sure that that is clear with the team at the high school. Sort of if a teacher, in their professional judgment, it's appropriate for the use of a cellphone per board policy and per the handbook, that would be permissible. And that was the only other adjustment that we made as far as the handbook language goes. And again, this is just another read, so we'll take further feedback from the board and do additional tweaks moving forward based on the feedback that we get from the Board of Education.
Does anybody have anything right now to share with Scott, our thoughts?
It doesn't have a thought. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Trent.
All right. At our last session, there was a conversation about the dress code. Did the dress code section change or is that remaining unchanged?
So I did not have clarity as to what needed to be changed from the, from a, from a broad view from the Board of Education. So we did not take any action on the dress code. There's been no changes from the last presentation.
Okay. And I, I recall the conversation and I shared, I didn't, I have not shopped for teenage girl clothes, but Shannon had some concerns. Shannon, did you read through, feel comfortable with that or do you have additional feedback?
I mean, it's the same as it was last time.
I mean, it's the same as it was last time. So I, I feel the same about it as I did last time where I don't like it. I, you know, I don't want to go into another diatribe about it. So I, I am curious as to, I know that Mr. Verwise said that he had people that were concerned and I wondered what exactly their concerns were. But other than that, no, I didn't have anything to add.
Okay.
Matt, you had a, a thought?
I did. So my thought was in regards to remote learning. How does this apply in general, you know, specifically along the lines of dress code and things of that nature? Now we have students potentially in their own homes as opposed to on school grounds, you know, kind of under our authority in that sense. So I'm just curious, have we looked at it from that side of things?
As far as policies go, we did do some investigating around that and board policies are still in place is if it's a school-related activity. And so for example, the little boy in the picture doing the heart with Heather Burns didn't have a shirt on. That was technically a violation. And I think he was sitting in his underwear as well. That was technically a violation of, of the dress code for that little first grader because but that's one of those things. The, 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 the board policy language is still in place. So if a student harasses another student during a, during a chat or during a, you know, a Zoom meeting or using district technology, that would be a violation of board policy or a violation of, of, of handbooks. If a student, two students do a drug transaction or plan to meet to do a drug transaction, that would be a violation of, of the school handbook. It's, there's not a lot of research out there as far as, you know, have districts been pushed on this at all, but just because it's so new. But yes, technically, you know, student behavior is still covered under the Code of Conduct and under the handbook and board policies if they're engaged in a, in a school-related activity.
So how comfortable do we feel that it's clearly laid out in the handbook? That, you know, if you're doing remote learning, these rules still apply. Do we have anything in there? Like that?
Yeah, we don't have specific language in the handbook or in board policy around remote learning because remote learning has only been in existence for about six weeks, which is so crazy. You know, you think, yes, Jen?
So just so that you're aware, in terms of remote learning, our teachers and administrators did go through sort of looking at their positive behavior intervention and support language in terms of the expectations, what those would be when we're in school. How does that translate to a remote learning situation? And they, they all did some work around that with their teams in terms of setting out what the expectation would be for remote learning for behavior. Stacy Voskel and I started to take a look at the handbook in that regard to say, okay, if this is, you know, what the expectation is when we're face to face, what might be some things we would want to consider? And I would say if we go forward in the fall with more remote learning, that would be something we'd want to do with our MGM team to be able to say with the building administrators, you know, what might be some things that we need to be more clear in articulating with students and families if we are still in remote learning.
And it is interesting, if a student's behavior is disruptive within a Zoom meeting and a classroom meeting and the teacher has to exclude the student from the meeting, that counts as an exclusion or that counts as a, you know, a removal from class. And we would have to, you know, follow the appropriate protocols to follow up with that exclusion. So it's, the rules still apply, even though we're remote. So although the mute button is nice and convenient, there are consequences for using it.
I'll, I'll say I've, I've seen it used before. So, yeah. Very inconvenient. Okay. And I just, the reason I bring it up, I wondered if, you know, I, we don't know what the future is going to be for the fall and this seems like a good time to make sure that we have some of those things accounted for or plug in if we need to. So that was the only, only thing I had.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, we met with the Neola rep regarding board policy last Friday and they didn't have anything new as, as far as things that we needed to consider. But my guess is that's going to be coming out in the next couple of months as districts really get their head around, wow, what is, what is it going to look like if next fall we come back and have to engage all of our students 100% remotely again? You know, and so are there going to be some tweaks? Right now, we approved a resolution that allows us to continue to operate under the auspices of Executive Order 202035 and now Executive Order 202065 as far as granting the superintendent permissions to make some adjustments as needed in order for us to be compliant. But boy, if we, you know, go into the 2020, 2021 school year and we're, you know, starting off 100% remote, that may be a whole nother, whole nother set of circumstances that we would want to have some additional language in, in the board policy docket to help cover us for those situations.
Fun times ahead.
Keeps us on our toes. So any other questions or comments regarding the handbook piece? I noted Shannon just was, would like to have some clarity around what the concerns were that Mr. Verwise alluded to the last time.
And I would like to say I appreciate that the cell phone thing was looked at and updated. I think in the future, if we want to, if they want to look at removing cell phones, I think it needs to come to the board first as policy change because I think our handbooks should follow policy and not the other way around. Yeah. So, but I appreciate that it's, that, that update was made.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. The next discussion item on the agenda is around a set of updates that have been recommended or brought to our attention from Neola. Pam and I met with the representative from Neola on Friday morning and really the collection of recommendations and, and adjustments for you to consider were tight enough that we thought we could bring it into the board for your first consideration this evening and then move forward with an approval for the time when we're together in, in June. So following past, past practice, rather than going recommendation by recommendation, I'll put it out to the group to see if there are any initial questions in regard to any of the proposed changes that Neola has put forth for, for you to consider. One point of clarification, there was a question around the definition of a student being full-time. And the question was in regard to students at new beginnings. How many classes would they need to be enrolled in to be considered a full-time student? And the answer to that question is six. So it's just like the high school. Our new beginning students have six, new beginning students have six classes to be a full-time student. So were there any questions or wonders around any of the recommendations in that Neola packet?
I was curious about the curriculum piece.
Yes.
Any approved classes?
Yes.
It's like there was a new paragraph added. I think it's, I think it was, which comes first, the chicken or the egg or that kind of thing? But I would, I was curious about that.
Yeah. So that one again was just to provide greater clarity. And I think trying to help in, in improve the degree of alignment between the course offerings that were presented for our students to consider and our school improvement plans and just our overall curricular program. So it just gives greater clarity around that at the high school level.
Okay.
So are there wonders around that packet? And again, this is the first, first round. We can dig deeper into it in, in June as questions arise.
So just curious, on that list of courses, when, when does that need to happen? I'm assuming sometime in the summer.
Yeah. So we would, so we can, just because we have approved courses doesn't mean that we have to offer the courses. So the approved courses is kind of the bank from which we can, we can select. And then the actual course offerings are based on enrollment requests from our students. And so really that approved, that approved list could happen, you know, within the next couple of weeks. It would just be a matter of pulling that information out of Power School and, you know, putting that information. Jen, do you have any thoughts as far as what that would take to, to assemble?
No, I think actually Matt has a spreadsheet that has a pretty good start of all the different things that have been offered in the past. I think maybe with the help of Pam, we could go through and cross-reference when they were approved by the board, but I, I, that shouldn't be super hard for us to pull together, I would say.
Does any student count go along with that? Like, for instance, how many students have to be enrolled and how many in which class before it's cut? Or is there any set guideline or is that always just administrative discretion?
Yeah, that's local, that's a local decision.
Right. But my question is, do we, do we as a district have, we shall not cut, I don't know, music or, 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 well, it'd be a course at the high school. We, you know, at what point do we cut a class or do we offer a class since this is more aimed at the high school?
So that's a great question. That would be, that would be contained really more within the administrative guidelines. And I'll have to do a little bit of research on that to find out, you know, what's, what's the cut point? Is it 15 students or is it? Yeah, but let me, let me do a little bit of work on that and, and circle back with some clarity.
And I, I feel like we've asked that question in years past too. Heidi, Ron's answered it. I can't recall what he had said as far as a number, but it was, yeah, probably around 15, 20, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Typically, that's the kind of thing that's part of a, a larger staffing plan. So, you know, if we've got 13 students that really want to take a particular course and we can balance with another course so that maybe one class has 32 in it and this class has 13, if we can have an overall balanced staffing budget, then, you know, sometimes you can offer some of those, those lower, those lower student account classes because you're living within the, the reins of an overall budget. But yeah, it would be nice to know where the guidelines were or where the guard, guardrails were with that decision-making process. So yeah, we'll get some clarity on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question.
So also with this, with this curriculum one, is it tied to textbooks or course material at all? Do we have to have that stuff on hand if we are approving a list of that sort?
Yeah. So it would make sense if that was all brought together in, in a singular document. I'm not seeing anything in this specific, this specific language, but if you, if the board approves a course, you also have to prove the curriculum. So it makes sense that we could produce a document that, that had all of that information together as far as dates with approval goes and that type of thing.
We're actually working on something similar to that in my office. So Robin's been working on, you know, what is the set of resources that goes with each course? So that should we have a new teacher who needs additional materials, we at least know what we need to get taken care of.
And, and that again fulfills one of our growth targets within the flight plan. It's guaranteed, you're providing that guaranteed and viable curriculum. And so it's, it, it's all part of the big picture.
Good.
So other questions regarding any of the Neola language? Okay. And again, this was first, first look. We'll bring it back up for approval in June. Or further consideration in June.
All right. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the public comment portion of our meeting. And we do have one person that wants to make public comment. I, did, did she join us on her own link in?
Yeah, she's an attendee and I can, when we're ready, I can give her, I can open up her mic.
Okay. So I think we just have one, but it's
We have two. I have one at my house.
Okay. So we have two. Okay. And then, so they know they have three minutes and we'll kind of keep a watch on the clock here. So we will have our first. And well, go ahead and open the mics, Matt.
Oh, well, first, I apologize.
Yes.
I don't know. I thought the public comment from Shannon's house was one, I don't know who the, who our guests are.
I, we have two attend, we have two in attendance right now. I would say if they would like to make a public comment that they click at the bottom, the raise your hand. So that they, it signifies that they would like to speak.
Okay. And you, Matt, can, you guys can, you can see that as the hopes.
Correct. Yes.
And if our guests would kindly identify themselves, so we know who they are, that would be most appreciated.
And I am not seeing any raise their hand.
So perhaps someone could use a computer that's already logged into the meeting.
Are we saying it's Alex's turn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless Alex is CMAC D or iPhone guest.
Nope.
No, I'm here. Hi, I'm Alex Vanderheide. I'm here to talk on the dress code. So am I able to start?
You are.
Okay. Okay. I would like to ask the school board and administrators tonight, why? Why was the dress code from the last two years supposedly not working? As a student, I didn't see one thing change for the worse. In fact, I was able to see improvements when that dress code was implemented. I saw students expressing themselves creatively through fashion. I saw confidence boosts in several female students because they knew they weren't being objectified by the administrators. I saw boys wearing crop tops because they were finally able to express themselves as I wanted. I was proud of my school for pushing for change in our society. I was proud of my school for not objectifying anyone's bodies. I don't see one thing wrong with the dress code from the previous two years. It has improved our school and the students' confidence. The only reason I can see why you would even consider changing this dress code is because of distraction. Though I can understand that argument, I have to disagree. I am bisexual, meaning I'm attracted to both women and men. From a standpoint of a student who is attracted to women, a woman's body showing in my classroom has never distracted me. From a standpoint of a student who is also attracted to men, men's bodies showing has never distracted me from my learning. What would distract me from my learning is the thought of a teacher looking at my body to analyze whether or not my outfit is revealing enough to kick me out of the classroom, removing me from my learning. The dress code from the last two years has kept me comfortable, knowing an adult is not analyzing how the clothes I am wearing look on my body, my teenage body. I know that for me as a student and many others, you are ripping the confidence and ability to be comfortable in our own bodies out from underneath us. So before changing the dress code, please look at the improvements this one has So before changing the dress code, please look at the improvements this one has made. And really ask yourselves, why? Why are we changing this? Is it truly for the better? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have another one? Another speaker?
Not for my house.
None of our attendees are raising their hand.
Okay. All right. Then without seeing anybody else, if we did miss anyone, they can always reach out to the board with our emails as well. We'd be certainly glad to read anything if anybody else wanted to comment on that. So with that, we will move ahead to our action items. And our first action item of tonight is our 2021 Kent ISD operational budget resolution. And I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support amended, right with a.
Is this the amended one? Okay. Yep, so this would also be amended with Tracy showing as absent.
Moved with the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion by Shannon, supported by Trent. For the motion on the table, is there any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yeah.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser? Hi, Missy. You good?
Yes.
Okay. President Reed, yes, motion carries. And our second item is the KIASB Board of Directors candidates. And I'll entertain a motion for as presented, Wisconsin Smith being the authorized signature and submitter.
So moved.
Support.
I have, we have a motion by Shannon, supported by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Having none, I'll call the role, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide?
Yes.
Trustee Revard?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. And that brings us to the communication portion of our meeting. And first, we have the Board of Education. And do we have any communication we'd like to share? Other than we've already gone through. I'm clear? Anything? All right.
So what are we doing next fall?
That's a great, great question.
Okay, there you go.
Just throwing it out there.
Scott, you want to, we'll.
Yeah, you teed it up for me, so I might as well take a swing at it.
Okay.
So first of all, we're really working hard as a county to move forward with a unified plan for the fall of 2020, 2021 school year. So we've got a subcommittee that's working just to create a vision for the future. I'm a part of that committee and it's, it's been a very robust experience so far involving a number of meetings. Back on March 13, I thought, wow, what am I going to do for the next few weeks if we don't have students on campus? But this committee work has taken 10 to 12 hours a week so far and it's, but it's real value add. So we're really appreciative of the opportunity to partner with, with our other, with our other districts. So really, in terms of next fall, we're looking at three different scenarios. So one scenario is face-to-face, just as we have been. In order to be able to do that, you know, we have to reach that phase five of the My Safe Start Plan that the governor shared on, on Thursday of last week. I linked that to the Red Hawk Weekly. I don't know if you had an opportunity to, to follow that tab, but in order for phase five to be, you know, established, it needs to be that point when the number of active cases is reaching a point where the infection from other members of the community is less than common. And so with widespread testing, positive rates fall much lower than earlier phases. And so really, it's, it's a point of the, the virus is contained overall. And based on science, based on the numbers, we're able to safely come together in groups again. Now, phase five could have phases within the phase five, right? So we could still, you know, they could, they could share with us, okay, we've reached a place where we can do face-to-face instruction, but you still have to be mindful of that six-foot zone of separation between students. And in that case, then we'd have to come back with some type of hybrid approach because we can't have 25 students in a classroom anymore. So the hybrid approach is some kind of blended model where, you know, we have a, a portion of our students together in a class for a, for a period of time. And then there's a portion of the students' day that's spent with, with learning remotely. And so blend of kind of the all-in-person and the all, all-remote that we're experiencing now. And then the third scenario that we're planning for is all-remote. And so really, it's a continuum, all-together or all-remote or some kind of blend in between. You know, one interesting thing that we have to be thoughtful of is, you know, so the, the curriculum, what is it that we're, we're going to be teaching? But also the how, in terms of, you know, within, within phase five, there are going to be safety protocols and, and medical protocols that we're going to have to implement in order to keep our staff, our staff safe, but also our, our students safe. And fortunately, we're, you know, we're in a, a region of the state where we have some very, very solid organizations that, that provide medical service to the world. And so it's happy, I'm happy to be able to say that, you know, we're able to, we're going to be partnering with Spectrum Health to identify that, that playbook that we'll be able to use to follow, that provides us with the protocols that we need to be safe, but also utilizing some of their contacts to get the, the equipment that we need, but also the people that we need to be able to do that, do that in face-to-face learning safely. I had a meeting this morning at, at nine o'clock with a couple of representatives from Spectrum and then I'll be meeting on Thursday with their Vice President for Community Health just to, to continue to expand that dialogue and that partnership. And so we're, we're excited about that as an opportunity. So, you know, first, part of our work is around just the trajectory of the virus and how that, how that rolls forward with our community. The second thing is we've got to be ready with, with a range of, of options, all-together or all-remote or anything in between. And so fortunately now, you know, we've got some time to put those plans in place and we're going to have to be able to implement them at a, at a moment's notice. So what are we going to do in the fall? As of today, as of right now, our students are going to be back on campus and ready to go on September 8. That's what we know as of today.
We hope.
But what we also know is we're going to be investing a lot of time and energy to, to have plans in place so that we've got the devices, we've got the procedures, the processes, we've made adjustments to our policies and our handbook language, our guidelines for behavior. So we're going to be ready for this thing, to be able to tackle it head-on and to do our best to have the greatest impact possible so our students and families and staff can thrive moving forward during these pretty wonky times. So that's the, that's the kind of collective extent of my communication.
So there won't be a whole lot of district choice then? I mean, kind of, it sounds like how the, how the rules are going to come down. Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Can you stretch on that a little bit?
Well, it, it'll be a, a government decision to the Kent ISD and therefore we shall, for however this goes. I mean, kind of like how we closed, correct?
Yeah, so we're trying to, well, so again, as of right now, the, you know, our executive orders are statewide.
Right.
But in the fall, they may be regional, you know? Kent, Ottawa, Muskegon County may be able to have in-person, in-person instruction. Phase five may be alive and kicking east of Lansing, but east of Lansing, you know, they're, they're not in phase five. And so they may, there may be some, some regional decisions that come down. But there, there has been a very, a very intentional approach by the superintendents to work together. We, we feel that we're stronger together, we'll learn from each other, and our students in general will be better off if we can present a unified approach. So for example, one of the things, one of the committees that the, that's coming out of that unified approach is some summer engagement opportunities for our families and for our students that, that will go all summer long, that are above and beyond our summer school programs. So looking at key partnerships with local entities, so John Ball Zoo, Frederick Meyer Garden, just some different entities in our community that will enable us to provide students with opportunities to stay engaged all summer long, to try and help bridge that gap so that we, we see, I guess, less harm by that, that 12 weeks off that ordinarily occurs between the beginning of June and the beginning of September.
So the, the word gap made me think of, so when the kid, when the students left in March and if they're doing things or whatever they're choosing to do online or not online, when we come back in the fall, do they come back just reinstated in their grade? Or are they coming back, well, you didn't finish thus and such a class, so you have to circle back and finish that? How does, in layman's terms, how is that playing out?
Right. Jen, do you want to tackle that?
So part of the executive order was that a student's grade on March 12 could not go any lower, especially for a secondary grade, that it could not go any lower than what it was on March 12. The policy that our secondary team has put together allows students to raise their grade and in fact incentivizes being engaged more than just, I'm, I'm active in a Zoom meeting, but I'm actually doing some learning and moving my learning forward. It's, it's a pretty great policy that they put together to really encourage people to stay engaged. One thing that does not go away though, is that a freshman in high school needs to have credits in order to graduate. So if on March 11 or 12, they were not passing that class and they do nothing between now and the end of the school year to impact that grade positively, they still will not earn credit for that course as they were not earning credit at that moment when we closed. But they've had lots of opportunity to engage and lots of contact from both teachers and administrators in order to encourage that engagement. So, you know, we, we hear people say, well, you can't hold them responsible for what happens during COVID. No, we can't force them to participate, we can encourage, and we know that's the best thing if they're able to participate, that they keep learning and that we don't have a six-month gap between March and when we were back together in September. So we're doing everything we can to ensure that we're helping students make wise decisions, especially at that secondary level where the consequences are pretty real for losing credit or having gaps in that way. Likewise, a math course where you need this math in order to go on to the next level of math or English or any class for that matter, it's important for them to have that. We know that our teachers are going to have to do some gap analysis when we come back together in the fall to see where students are. We know that we're going to have to adjust. No matter how we come back, we're not coming back with our normal day one, day two, day three. We're going to have to make some adjustments to meet our students where they, they are based on whatever the scenario was during this last couple of months of time.
So a sixth grade mom had reached out to me. She had heard whether or not that was right, but that if, if the student didn't do certain things, they would have to take a supplemental course coming back in the fall.
So I think probably, Heidi, what she might be talking about is what we have planned at the secondary level for a summer experience. Knowing that students left us with some gaps in reading and math, that we had students who weren't meeting their benchmark areas, if they haven't closed those gaps, we would like them to do something over the summer in order to close the gap and get back on track for where they should be for that grade level. So we're offering some experience remotely over the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. In the past, we did the meetup and eat up where the kids during the summer could come in and eat. Are we still planning on doing that this summer, except more like the way we're doing lunches now?
Yeah, Chris, can you tackle that?
So, yeah, Shannon, the, the plan right now is to continue with the current model of food service through June 30. I think the last day we will do it will be Monday, June 29. And then that has been the communication from MDE to, they wanted schools to continue with this current COVID structure through June 30. After that, we will go back to the, the plan is right now to go back to the model, the meetup and eat up model that we've done in the past for the rest of the summer. So, yep.
Thank you. I know that, and I don't know if it's working with Feeding America, but I know that Feeding America is now allowing the takeaway option where they can take it and eat it elsewhere. So I was hoping that we were going to do that.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely see that being something that is allowed after what's going on now. So, yes.
Okay. Any other thoughts along those lines? Did you anything further, Scott?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Matt perfectly teed up my, my thoughts.
Okay, that brings us to planning. Our next regular meeting is June 8. We'll stay tuned to see if we are in Zoom or if we get to meet in real people meeting on June 8. That'll be at 6:45 and we'll stay in touch. And that's all we have, so it is 7:52 and we'll stay adjourned. Thank you.
That's good, thanks.
Thank you so much, everyone. Be well.